All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, August the eighth at five thirty P. M. So we are. And I put you in the call of this public hearing to order. So just do a quick roll call. We have all board members present, as well as our superintendent, CFO, and then our guests here. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for taking your time to be present at this, at this public hearing today. So this is an opportunity for our folks to provide public comments on the budget that is being proposed for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. So we do have a PowerPoint that is available on Board Docs. We'll also have it up shared on the screen. It's just some information that might be a little bit easier for folks to digest than the full budget document, however, that is also available on Board Docs. And so we can we'll just open it up at this time for public comment. And then, you know, just offer something in particular that you think might be worth highlighting. You're also, this person, welcome to do that, as well as the doctor. So if you were joining us online and would like to review public comments, please raise your hand using that raising function zoom or type your name in the chat. That's a way to get them listed as well. And then anyone joining the person.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. So I see that Mr. Camacho is online, but he did send me some questions earlier in the day that I did answer, but for sake of transparency, I would like to share those questions and then the answers. And then I also do have a copy of that that I did give to Ms. Cora to share with you guys. I don't know if you guys have those in front of you. And so the first question was regarding S R two, and he wanted to know have those funds been fully expended? And yes, we had until August of this year to fully expend those. And then he asked, are, are there any S R three funds available for projected proposals? And potentially, yes, we are currently looking at some of our continuum of services from S R two sunsetting and to S R three, but we did build some capacity for continuing programs. Obviously, that's a larger conversation based on what is left after we have some of our contracted services. A lot of them are earmarked for some of our special ed services, as well as some of our socially emotional work throughout the district. But to answer my question, yes, there is some capacity for that. The second question, why was the funding for camp being charged to S R three for twenty-three, twenty-four and due to needing to do some budget reductions? That is an allowable cost in S R, and so we were able to free up those dollars to put into S R three to kind of help with our B E A portion. The second piece is, will the funding source change once S R funds have been expired? And the question, excuse me, the answer is yes, but that's, you know, based on board priorities. I know that camp is one of the hot ticket, you know, items, which is perfectly fine. I love camp. So again, that all goes back to our zero-based budget, our zero-based budgeting, but as well as the board budget priorities.
The other thing about camp is that since we did it last, there are grants available in the state, so we don't need to take that out of the engagement. If we got the grants.
Correct. So that's another opportunity for a different funding source. That is correct. And the third question, based on low attendance, we learned that hosting a forum is not an effective way to conduct community outreach. What other strategies will the district use to engage our community in an effective, meaningful, and equitable way? And thank you for that question because Director Larson and I kind of had a brief conversation about this, and he attended one of the forums, the community forums. And so the plan is to visit with the student groups within the schools, have parent and community surveys, and attend community meetings during the year. And then I'm also open to any additional suggestions because, again, it has kind of been really hard to get the input. So if anybody knows any other ways to make that more effective, I'm all for it. And then the fourth question was, historically, the science budget has been as high as seventy-five hundred dollars. Why has the science budget decreased to eighteen hundred dollars? And my response to that is that the, but within the school building budget, they are able to shift their dollars accordingly. But for the history of context, I shared with Mr. Camacho the last three years of the budget amounts in the science department. So this year was twenty-five hundred dollars. And they did not fully expend it pretty close, but didn't fully extend it for twenty-one, twenty-two. It was three thousand, wasn't fully expended. And twenty-twenty-one was eight thousand. I know that was a weird year, but it wasn't fully spent either. But if the building decides like, hey, we want more in science, they are more than willing to do so, shifting within maybe their supply budget to make that work for them. So those are the only questions that I address regarding the budgets. I wasn't sure if there is anymore, but I wanted to again share this with you because this came to my email prior to this meeting.
So I guess just to comment on number three a little bit more, because as I said, we talked about the thing that I see that works, not other districts, which are kind of down the, I think we could do a better job of this. You know, the budget is basically there's that kind of split it into two, there's, you know, stuff that we have to, they were contractually obligated to spend, which is probably about eighty-five or something percent of it. And we have a certain amount of discretionary money. And one of the things that it's good to get, that I've seen other districts can do is kind of make a list of all the kind of discretionary items. And then kind of put that out to the community to help rank them, you know, put their order on. And so that, you know, is probably, I guess, other districts have kind of done that. And I think that's probably, in addition to, I completely agree with the idea of, you know, going out to the groups, the parent, the student groups, the parent groups, all that kind of stuff. But you didn't bring these lists. So here's, here's the best stuff that we, you know, is kind of discretionary, to some degree, and help us help rank them, you know, what you think is important for you. So that's, that's I mean, what I've seen, you know, we've typically gone out with, I mean, when you go out with this straight accounting document, there's no sense of it. But if we go out with our board priorities, that's, in all the years that I've watched this, that's where people tend to engage with, because they can kind of understand more of those board priorities. You know, social, emotional, that, you know, the other things that we have on there. And so if that list can be kind of maybe expanded a little bit to maybe a little more details, and then have people prioritize, I think that would be, for my, over the years I've worked with the process a long time, that would probably be, you know, a good way to go.
Yeah, should be, in addition to that, I mean, you know, we talk about community engagement as a whole in our district in ways of changing that. And I think that there are some things that are being really thought about and brings along a plan to put together that I think then will make engaging with the community on budget much, probably easier, hopefully. So, you know, I think just, you know, to, to both getting that opportunity to share this stuff with that, so then you go on this.
And I think another piece that I had spoke to Mr. Baker about, kind of towards the end of the the actual school year, fiscal year for the school year, is kind of working with the the program, doing what I call this, like, maybe the videography program at the high school and put together just like a two-minute video that talks about budget, kind of like where the revenue comes from, how does it work? So just, you know, just a great, you know, bubbly visual. So people go, oh, okay, so that's how we get our funding. Oh, that's how that works. This is how we spend. This is, you know, kind of how it worked. Because again, if, you know, if you're not in there doing it, you kind of don't know. You're just like, okay, well, that program went away, or, oh, we have money for that program, or what does that grant actually do? So kind of giving kind of just an overall nice, fluffy visual of kind of how, how such a work.
Very cool project opportunity for our students to learn a lot about district budgets and.
Yeah, media arts.
Yeah, I thought about doing it myself, and I just got overwhelmed. Like, I'm like, well, how do you put the words up? I was like, no, I'm done. We're gonna, I'm gonna. Let's start with the students. I'm sure they can do that very easily.
The other part of that, too, is explaining, I'm not sure people necessarily care where, when he's coming, except there is a key concept, I think, that people need to understand, and that is that, you know, pretty universally, people recognize that the state under the education. Okay, so, I mean, in terms of where's the money coming from, it's on the list. I want to point many barrels down into Olympia on some of this stuff, which is a good report that most people don't necessarily yeah, understand. You're right, where, you know, where all those money's coming from. I mean, they probably understand, they may understand the city under the recovery tax bill. So it's kind of, it's kind of helpful from the taxpayer, of course, but who decides how much goes, what's the legislature that decides where all that money goes? And so it's pretty, you know, the state is definitely underfunding. And on top of that, for districts like ours that have a lot of high poverty schools, it's even more interesting because it's not equitable. So, I mean, that, that message, I think, is important to, to deliver to, to people. So, because I wanted to hopefully try and direct some discontent down to Olympia on, on what's going on, because that's where, that's where, that's where all the decisions about, you know, how much money you can get is right down there.
No, absolutely.
This is not to say we shouldn't have the discussions about, okay, we get this amount of money, we're gonna spend it. We've had that discussion too, but also.
No, that's true. And that's the whole point of sharing that, because when people are informed, and they start becoming passionate once they get this new information, eh, we might have, you know, some people that are, you know, going to go to go down there and say, hey, I learned about this, tell me more, what's going on. So, yes, like when people are informed.
Want to, or just give us on the website?
Um, you can click on that one, number four. And so basically, I just want to speak to the budget outlook. Some of the challenges that we are experiencing is that we, one of the pieces is an increase to our insurance premium. Over the last couple of years, it has increased significantly. The other piece is that Esther Cliff, meaning that our last Esther allocation sunset the end of August of twenty twenty-four, and that is problematic for a lot of reasons. I believe that for this upcoming school year, we have close to five million dollars budgeted in that, and that consists of twenty-three staff members, as well as contracted services. And so that's just another area that we will really have to go back again, where I speak to zero-based budgeting, to see what the priorities are of the board of the district. The other piece is our enrollment versus our staffing ratios. Our staffing seems to keep going kind of in a up direction, but our enrollment kind of goes down. And there's a slide of that in the larger document. The other piece is inflation outside of just grocery store inflation, service inflation is just inflation across the board just has a domino effect on everybody. And then the other piece is the decreased ending fund balance over the last couple of years. Our fund balance has been decreasing. S R funds have kind of helped us stay afloat, but we are at a position where we really need to make some, some tough decisions to not only right-size our budget, but then to be in alignment with our board policy of having six percent ending fund balance. But there are some opportunities. We did the state positively some households. I don't have the numbers in front of me. That did help increase our special ed funding. I think our increase is close to five hundred thousand dollars for the upcoming school year. So that's great. Again, that's all contingent on the enrollment numbers that were put in our enrollment projection. So, and then we do have some new housing developments. We have seen an uptick in some enrollment at some of our elementary schools. And then we also have our new municipal P T E program, which is good because that allows for additional funding source. I think that's close to, I won't, don't quote me, somewhere about a hundred fifty thousand dollars that no longer will come from B E A or the tech levy piece, because now we have a legitimate program and we're able to get those dollars reimbursed from the state. So.
You can have a comment. The same to go through the question bracket. I will follow up. Director Larson identified that there is state funding for outdoor education experiences. Who's responsible for applying for those state funds? Also, the women staff know that our S R three funds are still available for projects for post.
Hey, so when it comes to the grant piece, I receive emails, daily emails. I'm kind of registered on the, the daily, you know, the emails anytime any grants come out. So I do keep my eye on that, but I will look to see who the contact is for the current outdoor education program to see what that looks like for the upcoming school year. As far as the S R three projects, I would say probably, I would need, probably, I would say within the middle of September. Again, I do have funds earmarked. But that would be around the, a good time to start submitting proposals, and then I will take it to the team and then go from there.
It was great. Thanks. So just want to take a quick second to pause and remind folks that have joined us since the beginning, that this is a public hearing where your public comment around our budget is welcome and encouraged. So if you have something to offer, whether it's a question or a comment, please, you can type it in the chat. Though I really invite you to bring your words into this space as well. So you can raise your hand or just type your name in the chat. Let us know. And definitely make sure that you can.
Just to follow up on that question about the funding, S R funding. Is there a notice that goes out to all staff saying this project or we're receiving proposals for projects? Or how does that happen?
That is a really good question. I want to say that when let me back up. It was at the, I'm trying to think what function it was. I think it was the, the kickback. That's what it was. I think it was the, the welcome back kickback last year, and we have put up those documents that, that, hey, what are your top priorities, social, emotional? So we have the sheets and the list there. And then within that, there was information about submitting proposals, because we actually have a document that we send out to staff. And so I can either bring that back when we do the kickoff, or I can just send an all-staff email with the doctor.
Something that identifies what the projects need to be.
So it's a, so it's a, it's a document that says, hey, what's your, you know, what is the project for? How much you think it's costing? Do you include all parties that this may potentially affect? And I think there's other piece that kind of talks about allowables.
Okay.
Then I can send you a copy of it.
Is there a C line or?
Not necessarily. Sometimes people get really creative. So it's not necessarily a billing. We just want to know what are they thinking around their project? And sometimes it's like, hey, we can't do all of this, but we can do some of this. What is the direct impact to students? Things of that nature. And I don't make that decision myself. So usually that's kind of a, you know, I take it to, you know, cabinet, and we have a conversation around it.
Right.
Yes, a little bit. I'm looking at number four, and you said that the twenty twenty-three funding was almost spent. And yet we're decreasing it by seven hundred dollars.
Yes. And so we have done decreases for departments as well as schools. And so even though that particular budget may have decreased, the school have the ability to maybe take something that's in supplies, because usually I give the buildings a little bit more allocation than what they spent in the prior years in their supply budget, so that they can move it within the different buckets. Another piece of that is that I had to increase graduation, because historically, we would just say, you know what, graduation is going to cost us eighteen thousand dollars. And every year, graduation cost is twenty-two or twenty-three. And so you got to take it from somewhere else to kind of allocate. And it's not just specific to science, that one was just called out. But across the board, there has been.
And their building budgets are.
They are, but believe it or not, they usually don't get fully expended. Some, some buildings are pretty spending cautious, they've been cautiously, right? They're a little, they're a little frugal, which I appreciate because it does donate to, you know, the ending fund balance. So again, I kind of do look at historically what they have done, and even pre-COVID, to see if I'm I need to make sure that they can still function and get the services they, they need. But the other piece of that, which people may not even be aware, but the cost of paper is astronomical. Over the last probably five years, it's thirty, twenty, it's doubled. It is very expensive. And what, and what I've seen and heard in the building, there's a lot of printing happens, a lot of packets get done. And now a budget that used to be three thousand dollars is now seven to eight to ten thousand dollars, and I'm not exaggerating with that. And it's like, could we print less and maybe not give out packets and do something different? Again, I'm not calling anybody out. I'm just going by what I, what I, what I've heard. But how do we try to minimize that expense, find other ways to engage our students, and then maybe give those dollars somewhere else? Because again, we, we can't help the cost of paper, but it's, it's, it's very expensive. So I know that was super random, but it's just one of our realities with something that we consume a lot.
And the tricky part of that is that the state, you know, increases are done by I P D essentially, which is frequently, that's mostly about salaries, and it's not really about paper and gasoline and, you know, all the other things that districts need to buy, which can be going at inflation rates well above that. So we don't get extra money to cover that.
I believe that in the, I would need to look, I think that they do do some to the M S O C pool, but again, it's still not enough.
Oh, yeah. They probably apply the same with the D C S L, which we know. And so there are, in recent years, there's been, you know, things like paper and gasoline, you know. They've gone up way, way higher than, you know, the general population, so.
So how, how did, if a building is frugal, it's almost like they get penalized for being frugal, because then their number comes down to their frugal level. What if things have been deferred? And they, they've lost that extra piece.
A little bit of cushion. That is a great question. I think that just comes with, you know, conversations. Right? So for example, let's say in a conversation, hey, you know, Veronica, thank you so much. But, you know, we have been frugal, but there's something that needs to happen. For example, I don't know, our library wants to do something, you know, is there any room to, you know, get an extra, I don't know, four thousand dollars to help with X, Y, Z. And for the most part, I'm pretty flexible. Like, I don't do things quite bare-bones, right? But there's always that, that room for a little bit of contingency.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is too, is like, as much as, you know, the reality of that type of way of budgeting really has its cons, we are at a one percent fund balance, right? And so that means that we have to, you know, be really mindful, and likely it's going to impact a little bit, hopefully really minimally, but it's going to impact people's budgets. And it's going to mean small decreases and things. And I think, you know, that's okay. We need, you know, and because we are going to figure out how to move through that and, and, you know. Yeah, but I think that's just the reality of where we are, and that's all right.
Yeah, I think the, you asked it last, I mean, you know, what were the ideas for efficiencies that came out? But so many of these meetings in a long time. They, they rarely, the only efficiency that tend to come out of that is, oh, that person over there should cut. That person over there should cut. That isn't. And so typically, what I, what I found, the, the best efficiencies come out if each department had, and each school had kind of looked at that, you know, had the conversation within their world. Okay, how can, you know, how can we be more efficient? That's where I've seen. And the person I'd like to just, you know, credit Sue Kelly, Trappatation. I mean, she just does that constantly over the years. She's always looking for ways to run her, you know, department more efficiently. And so, and the big thing was, you know, I know, another years ago, we had like a five hundred thousand dollar subsidy for McKinney-Bentho. She cut that down, I think it's a hundred thousand or something like that.
Yeah, she's been doing, I mean, slowly going back up just because we're getting more McKinney-Bentho students, but absolutely, she's like that.
But I mean, that's the kind of thing that I've seen over the years. That's, that's kind of the best way we get efficiencies, is everybody looking at their budget and doing what they can to, to, to cut back. Because, yeah, the product, first of all, when you get community members, community members tend not to know enough about the details of the operation to be able to, they can prioritize things, but not so good as pointing, okay, I think this is where it's going to go. But, and, and there is always a tendency to, you know, I mean, we had a thing a number of years ago where, oh, add them, you know, and that's the favorite place. And a number of years ago, we were up at like twelve percent, and, and it was too much. And we, but that's come way, way down. So we're now down to a reasonable number. And of course, the funny thing is that as soon as we cut out, and then people started saying, you know, so we, we didn't have a communication director, we were speaking about directors. And then, well, we needed to, so it's a matter of finding that, that balance. But anyway, that's a question about, you know, where are the efficiencies? I think that's where they come from. The best is by each, for each organization, it's looking within their world and seeing what they can do. And if everybody's working together, then we get the, yeah.
I should probably have this bit on our slides or something.
Well, I don't know. Yeah.
Expense by program. Well, he is twelve, twelve, sorry.
So looking at this, we got basics there. That's a good one. I feel like those are under, let me get back to you. I feel like those are only reportionment under forty, forty ones. I know that means absolutely nothing to you. I'll get back to you. I'm looking at, yeah, basically, yeah, that's that number, you're thirty ones, or the twenty ones, thirty ones. Yeah. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
There's a lot of.
There is, it's under, it's forty-one, a whole bunch of.
It's a whole, we'll, we'll, yeah. So I'll make sure it's accurate for the record.
Yeah, I think that story, it's backstory, I think it's like that out funding.
Yep, exactly. Any of this part of the state, then that's not part of the enforcement, so like forty-one, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-five, seventy-four.
It's a category.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have a weird word.
In our two remaining minutes, just don't leave any extra space for folks that, again, if you're just online, if you didn't feel comfortable or ready to, to jump in. Yeah, we have a raised hand.
So, yeah, Martha. Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hello.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not going to show my mug, because I was kind of cooking dinner and doing all kinds of other stuff. In the meantime, I do have a question. I'm really not sure if this is an appropriate time to ask it or not, but and I didn't go through all the slides prior to coming on here. But can, is there a way to tell, are we going to be providing food for our students again this year? Free of charge?
Yes. Yes, we are mandated by the state now to offer the C E P program, which is specifically talking about the program. Excuse me, specifically speaking to the program that you're referencing. So yes, mills, the initial mills are free to student. Meaning that if they want second, they would, you know, depending on where they fall on the, you know, pre-reduced, all that piece. But yet their first mill is free.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's state law. State law, that means it will continue for a long time. I think probably forever.
Thank you so much, Robin, for the question. All right. Well, that brings us to six o'clock. There is, of course, opportunity for public comment. If you're joining us during this session at our six-thirty meeting, if you would like to. If you're joining us uh during this session um at at our six thirty meeting, if you would like to offer public comment then. Um but for now, we will officially adjourn this um public hearing. Thank you.